All right, well, welcome, everyone. Tonight is Monday, April 15th. I hope you all have your taxes done. And this is a special joint city council meeting of the Minnetoka City Council and our planning commission. It's a study session. And so I'll call this meeting to order. And we will go around the room, and I will start with Mr. Gordon. Lauren, you start. We'll go around, and then we'll have staff introduce themselves, and then we'll have our guests introduce yourselves as well. And some will walk around with a microphone so you can be heard. Lauren.
Lauren Gordon, city planner.
Julie Wischnack, community development director.
I'm Sean Suter. I'm the lead consultant with ZoneCo.
Alicia Gray, economic development and housing manager.
Brenna Dom, an assistant city manager.
Mike Funk, city manager.
Derek Banks, planning commission.
Deb Calvert, city council member at large.
Amanda Maxwell, planning commission.
Jarceul, planning commission.
Brad Weirston, mayor.
Alex Hansen, planning commission.
David Waterman, planning commission.
Rebecca Shack, council member, Ward 2.
Kizzy Copley, Ward 4.
Kimberly Wilber, City Council at Large.
Deidre Minion, planning commission.
Paul Warren, City Council, Ward 3.
Katzy Foster-Wolton, Ward 1.
Avril Kelly O'Dea, Recreation Director.
Sarah Westy, Assistant Recreation Director.
Dakota Krings, Inner Williston Fitness Center Manager.
Corinne Heine, City Attorney.
Darren Nelson, Finance Director.
Jacqueline Davis, representing Jacqueline's Foot Care as a tenant at The Marsh.
Stephanie Hansen, owner of Prima Despa. I'm a tenant at The Marsh.
Listen Tarz Lachkaya, owner of Tempered Bodywork, tenant of The Marsh.
Bob Thayman, resident.
Chad Dipman, Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity.
Cindy Rich, resident and member of the Minnetoka Community Housing Team.
Sally Bressler, member of the Minnetoka Community Housing Team.
Rachel Holmes, resident and member of the Mills Church Affordable Housing Team.
Jason Palm, resident and a member of Mills Church.
Joan Bliss, Minnetoka resident.
David Lant, Minnetoka resident and lead pastor at the Mills Church.
All right. I think that's everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. And so we have several business items tonight, the first of which is our zoning diagnostic report. And that was in the packet. And Ms. Wischnack, Julie, I guess we go by first names in our informal study sessions. Julie, you want to take it away?
Thank you. I think I'll still call you the mayor, though.
You can call me whatever you want.
Mike, did you have any internal comments, or did you just want us to take it away? Okay. Thank you all for coming together. I think we had the opportunity to have our consultant here in town tonight, hence why we are all gathered at one time to hear the report that he has prepared. But before he gets into that, and before I introduce him, I do want to remind the council and the planning commission, we've kind of been on this journey for a while. If you don't remember, we had applied for a grant from the Metropolitan Council to look at the zoning ordinance and to look at it in an objective and evaluation-type way so that we could determine whether or not the Conference of Plan goals were being met with the zoning ordinance. And Sean will get into this a little bit more when he gives his presentation. We gave the council an update last September. We linked your packet information for that, so you had a kind of an update along the way. And then we've actually just been waiting to get on a docket in front of you to hear the presentation. I think that there was also some involvement. Many of you participated in a survey. So the planning commission and the council were surveyed for their opinions about the zoning ordinance and maybe what issues they saw. Sean will recap that for you. Obviously, there's been some state-level conversations about these issues as well. So all of this timing actually worked out pretty perfectly. And on top of that, all of the planners in the entire nation are in Minneapolis right now, meeting. And we've just been at the conference for the last two days. And again, that's why Sean's in town, and it made a lot of sense to have the presentation now. Just some opening comments to remind you. The discussion is just purely that tonight. It's discussion. There is no vote taken at this meeting. That's maybe more for the public's information. Discussion means that the city council planning commission members will talk and visit about the issues that Sean brings up. And then there will be kind of a path that we share at the end. I'll preview that a little bit. We really don't need much direction. We're coming back in July with a housing update. And during that housing update, we'll maybe have a clearer path in terms of the zoning work, and then see if the council at that point is ready to proceed with some action. So that's kind of the path of where we're headed. With that, I want to introduce Sean Suter, who is with ZoneCo, and he's been our consultant while we do this zoning evaluation. So go for it.
All right. Let me make sure. Okay? All right. There we are. Very good. Well, thank you, everyone, for having me out tonight. It's good to be here in Minneapolis for the APA conference. About 4,000 or 5,000 city planners from around the country, so I mean, that's a fun crowd to be with, as you can imagine. Oh, my gosh. It's the hot topic. It is actually. Zoning has become the hot topic lately because of all the conversation around zoning reform in the United States, a lot of which started right here in the Twin Cities. So it's pretty exciting to be here with you all. My name is Sean Suter, and I am lead principal and founder of ZoneCo, and hence the name, "We Write Zoning Codes." Actually, a lawyer and a city planner, and have served in public sector roles, and put together this consultancy of people. We have about 10 of us, and we write zoning codes for cities and communities around the country. So it's good to be here and be working with you on this diagnostic report. But the purpose of the diagnostic report is exactly that, is to audit your existing zoning regulations and see, you know, whether they are advancing your plan vision. And you have the 2040 plan in place. It's been adopted. Spoiler alert: it's not consistent. I think you all know that. Why? Because the zoning code has not been comprehensively updated in accordance with your plan. And that's very typical of communities around the country. Communities oftentimes either have a requirement to do a plan every so many years and update the plan. Depends on your state. Or they just do so. And it's a little bit easier to update your plan and to do your planning process. It's a little more fun than updating your zoning code every five years. Can you imagine that? So zoning codes sort of sit on the books for 30, 40, 50, 60 years. It's not unusual to see a code we work on that hasn't been really overhauled since the 1950s or 1960s. So you're doing better than that. And so it's a good time. You're doing the right thing here. Getting that grant from the Metropolitan Planning Organization was smart so that you could take a look at your code. Now, what we do is we go through every line of your zoning code. We do it pretty specifically. And the reason we do that is because when I was chief counsel for land use and planning for the city of Cincinnati back in the early 2010s, one thing that I did was I went through our zoning code, and I said, you know, "If you can't say why you're doing this, if you can't justify a provision, why is it in the zoning code?" And a lot of times, it's just carry forward, right, over decades. And it's what we've always done. But this is a great opportunity to go through line by line and say, "Okay, is this serving us? Is this advancing our plan? Or is this actually serving as a regulatory barrier to trying to get to where we want to go?" And we're really focused on your 2040 plan. That's what the community said that you want to do. So this is a checkup. I always say you can't, you know, know what the cure is until you know what the disease is. I'm happy to say that you're not terminally ill, your zoning code. It's not the end of the world. I mean, there's a lot of good stuff that's serving your community well in there, but there's a lot of stuff that is not advancing the vision in certain parts of your community and on certain issues like housing, diversity, et cetera, that are important to you. So that's what we're doing here tonight. And, you know, this is usually the first step in the process to comprehensively update your zoning code. And sometimes we do this as part of the first module of a project after you've already kicked off the zoning code rewrite. Other times, we do this at this stage sort of independently, and then you all decide, you know, "Do we want to go forward with a rewrite, or what?" I had to set that on my computer, but not up there. Duh. Okay. So key, the research, obviously, we review everything, your planning. We work with staff, talk with your planning, professional planning staff, analyze how it is, you know, our independent judgment. It's not a science. But, you know, based on our knowledge of zoning and codes around the country and best practices and how codes relate to vision, which they should be in implementation, we analyze it and evaluate it, and then make some recommendations for you to consider as we go forward. Some of the guiding principles, like I mentioned, that we have at ZoneCo is really zoning should only regulate what should regulate, only what needs to be regulated, right? So there shouldn't be things in there that you can't justify, essentially. Zoning should respect both existing and desired development patterns. I think that's really key. You know, we're not trying to throw out everything that has, you know, been done before, right? You have a lot of good things here, and we have to respect the existing development patterns, and then focus on where those desired changes might be. And then, obviously, zoning should be the implementation of the plan. And if you find that it's serving as a barrier to trying to get things that you want in this community, then that's a problem. We need to eliminate those barriers and pave the way. So I always say, you know, if you want to know how your zoning code is working or not working, just look around, see what's been built. That's a great indication of if it's working or not. If you don't like it, it's probably not serving your community. If it's achieving all the goals, then wonderful, there's nothing much to do. Why do I keep doing that? That's very confusing. All right. So the existing, I'm going to close that. The existing zoning code that you have was established in the '60s when Minnetoka became its own municipality. There was a major overhaul done in the '80s. Obviously, there has been a lot of development here in the '80s, in the '90s, in the 2000s, especially with the interstates and just sort of the growth of the Minneapolis-St. Paul region over that time period. The code is about 367 pages of fun reading. And it is, I would say, you know, a traditional sort of zoning code from that era. It's just loaded with text, not a lot of helpful graphics or tables or charts that we see in modern zoning codes to help you administer and use it. And it also has the waterfall approach that I love so much with the uses, right? So this use is allowed, only use is allowed in the prior zone or allowed in this zone and that whole thing. And that's just really hard to follow. Somebody along the way, and this is nationwide, decided that that might be an efficient way to write a zoning code, probably back in the '60s and '70s. And it turns out that it's just confusing. So we have better ways to approach that. Again, you know, it's achieving certain things and not others, but I would say overall, it's a 40, almost 40-year-old code, and it looks like one. And so what happens, like I said, most communities don't want to redo their zoning code often. It's a big undertaking. It's a big legislative process. I encourage them to, obviously. It would be great every time if you did your plan, you overhauled your zoning code, but that doesn't happen. But what happens is you sort of get settled into the zoning code, and then you amend it piecemeal. And you do that every time, whatever the issue of the day is, or whatever the trend is that you want to address, or the problem. And so, and that's kind of what you've all done. And that's very, like I said, very typical of communities around the country. And since 1986, you've amended this code 338 times. And it sounds like a lot, but over the years, it's probably about 10 times a year that you're amending the zoning code. And where are those amendments? About 30% of those amendments have been in the administrative sections dealing with process. About 36% have been zoning district amendments. That's going to be things like uses and development standards. I would guess, over time, uses coming in and out, the new uses coming in that you want, uses you don't want. Somebody comes in and says, you know, "You're seeing variances over and over for the same thing," and you're like, "We just need to fix the code." And then 25% of are just other regular, general regulation amendments. So what this tells me, you know, we go into a city and look at the zoning code. If it's being updated piecemeal, obviously, it's probably not serving a community that's evolving, and yours is. Also, evolving trends. You know, 1986, we're really talking about infill multifamily housing. You know, we were talking earlier about an infill project at the mall. You know, was that, we weren't talking about that in 1986, probably. You know, so the zoning code wasn't written for that kind of thing, right? In 2024, that's all people are talking about, is how do we create, you know, housing diversity, housing options, affordable housing? Everybody in the country is talking about this. Walkable places. And so the zoning code doesn't do that, because in 1986, that wasn't what we were talking about. So now's the time to take a fresh look at things. Your comprehensive plan goals, I got a little messed up there on the formatting, but strengthening neighborhoods through housing improvement and preservation, as well as promoting new affordable market rate housing. Again, almost every community we work in, that is a goal, because housing is expensive everywhere, it seems anymore. And, you know, there's not a great diversity of housing, especially in suburban communities that are majority, if not supermajority, single-family housing. Goal two, foster housing diversity by promoting a variety of housing types, sizes, and prices. This is another one where I always say, you know, American zoning is a century-old experiment. Never in the history of humanity have we lived like this, right, wrong, or indifferent. But we've never lived in single-use places that are served only by automobiles, ever. We've always walked, or taken carts, or horses, or we've lived where we worked. So this is really new in the span of humanity, that we've taken this experiment, and some may think it's worked, others don't think it's worked, and now we got to figure it out. But what we found is, when you have one type of housing, you're going to get one type of person generally, right? You're going to get a family. And that's what single-family homes were built for, this American dream, the suburban, the quarter-acre lot. Again, nothing wrong with it, but your goal is to foster housing diversity. So how do we bring your kids back to live here after they graduate from college? How do we age in place? And maybe we don't want a quarter-acre, half-acre house to maintain. Where are we going to go? Do we have to leave the city and go somewhere else? You know, what happens when we are even, you know, aging out of living independently? Is there senior assisted living, those kinds of things? Does everybody want a 3,000-square-foot house? Some people want an 800-square-foot apartment. So that's the conversation in many, many suburban communities around the country that were developed with one development pattern. And then, you know, creating a connected pedestrian bicycle system. A lot of cities have great trails and sidewalks and things like that, but for the most part, most diverse suburban communities were built for cars. And yours is no exception, right? I mean, you're going to get around by car, most likely. So how do we start to infuse some of that walkability, walkable amenities into your city? And then supporting business expansion and retention, of course. We want to make this a great place to live and work and do business. Okay. So what struck me, I always love looking at the future land use plan in any comprehensive plan, because this is the vision truly for what the community is going to be. And if you look here, to go back a couple slides, this is your existing map. And you see all those big blue, navy-blue parcels. Those are large commercial parcels. And you have a lot of large commercial parcels, whether it be shopping centers, a mall, office and business parks, things like that. It's not a community of small-scale neighborhood business, walkable neighborhood business. That's missing, right? But you do have a lot of drivable commercial, okay? And you can tell that just by looking at the map and seeing how large those parcels are. So if you look, what struck me as I looked at this, a lot of those navy-blue parcels are now purple. And what's fascinating is mixed use is now the conversation in those places. And so what the city has said in the land use plan, your vision is for those places to turn into more mixed use rather than single use. And I think that's probably my biggest takeaway. You know, look at all that yellow. That's your single family. That's not changing, and I don't think anybody's proposing it to change. The areas that are not yellow, or maybe not institutional, are the ones that are the ones where you're going to start seeing incremental changes. And that is additional density, additional uses. I will say the trend is away from single-use zoning. It's just not economically sustainable. If you think about, you know, a shopping center, when the trends go up and down, or an office building now, office buildings are in bad shape, right? Because that's all they were built for. And so now the question is, how do we retrofit these? It's so expensive. Many are just going to have to be torn down and the land reutilized. So, you know, what you're saying here is, how do we infuse a mix of uses that create a vibrant place that's economically sustainable? That's your last goal, right? Support businesses. Economic sustainability, you want to give the place the best chance to thrive and survive. You have a mall that seems to be doing well. Many people have that same mall that is empty. We hope that mall continues to do well. You have the demographics to support a really nice mall. It's probably going to be fine. But if trends change dramatically, you don't know. And that's a single-purpose, single-use mall. Now, what you're doing is, I think, really positive. You're putting housing in there. So that helps that mall. That's going to help make that a more sustainable place. So anyway, that was the big takeaway, is if you look at your existing mixed-use acreage, you have 13 acres in the entire 18,000 acres that's mixed-use zoned, you're going to 1,097, which is about 6% of the city. So that's a humongous increase in places that you're calling for mix of uses. With respect to other uses, like office, you know, right now, you've got almost 609 acres of office, and you've reduced that, you're reducing that down to a lot, 238. Same with industrial. The long and short of it is, these are the places where I think your zoning code needs to match up with your vision the most. Do we need to go in and mess around with all that yellow? No, I don't think so. I think it's probably fine. It's not going to change. But it's all these other places where you can start achieving that vision. And that's where I would focus if I were you, on your zoning reform efforts. Not to say that the whole code couldn't be made to be more user-friendly and clear and consistent, all that. I think you could probably do the whole code over. But as we see in a lot of places, the single-family zoning, maybe you add in ADUs or other things like that, if you don't already have them. But you have those, actually. So you have them. So I mean, there's not too much to be done there. It's those other areas. So we talked to the, we did a survey of stakeholders, and this is what they said, more zoning and development flexibility, less rigidity. Again, I think that goes to the economic sustainability concept. Let's make sure that we don't build everything so rigidly that when the trend changes, it's obsolete. I think that's really important. More housing affordability, absolutely. And how do you do that? You can do that with supply. You can do that with unit sizes. You can do that with other inclusive zoning tools. Better connectivity and transportation options. That is a reflection of the auto-orientation of this community and the size of the roads, and this is just how it was built. And again, so if you want better connectivity, we're going to have to probably force that a little bit through the zoning. And that could just be as simple as like a cul-de-sac subdivision, having some access to something and not just being, you know, cut off. And so there's lots of things we can do there. Clear zoning standards and less discretion. When we start seeing a lot of discretion given, it's not a bad thing a lot of times to give the administrative staff discretion, but if everything is going to the discretion of a board or commission, you know, we need clear definitions so that nobody has to make interpretations all the time. When you update piecemeal a code over time, things get messy. It just does, right? Terms don't match up necessarily, no matter how good you are, how hard you try. Things are just going to get a little wonky over time. Things get missed. Things get maybe, you know, contradictory, whatever. So you're hearing that, look, we just need very clear, here's what we can, here's what we can't do, here's the built form we're looking for, here's the uses. Environmental and tree protection balanced with property rights. I assume that environmental and tree protection might be stopping things. And so the question is, how do we integrate that and still get the good results without it completely halting a project? And then update processes and fees to make projects more economically viable. We see this in many, many communities. Time is money. Obviously, the more professionals you need to hire, the longer it takes. It just drives up cost. We call it regulatory risk, and it's the cost, think about every dollar I invest in a project in Minnetoka, how much of that goes toward all of the processes, quote-unquote, red tape, if you will? But all of that, right? To get it approved, how much of that dollar is that? That's going to drive up the cost of the project considerably. I don't think in a market this strong, it's going to drive anybody away. But in some of the communities we work in, it will drive people away. So anyway, those are the things we're hearing from your community, and it goes kind of hand-in-hand with your planning and the independent review that we've done. We just went through your code. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, obviously, line by line or anything like that. You have it. You can read it. Of course, we're here for questions. But, you know, we went through, we looked at the administrative regulations. They're scattered throughout the code. We like to see those in one place so that you can find them easily. You should be able to open to a chapter, whether you're an armchair zoning person or the planning director, and you should be able to figure out very quickly and easily how to get from A to Z on a project. And if you have to flip around, or if you can't find things, or if you miss things because you don't know they're in there to begin with, it just makes it much harder. Think about if I bring an application in for something, and I bring it to staff, and staff says, "Well, why didn't you put this in?" "Well, I didn't know it was there." Because it, "Oh, that's in Chapter 4," you know? It just, it wastes everybody's time and money, and it creates frustration. So that's one thing, like, let's get it all tidied up into the one place, and maybe we can do some streamlining. Reviewing all staff board committee roles and processes, I note, and I don't usually, you know, we can talk about this later, but my understanding is, planning commission does pretty much all the reviews, both quasi-legislative and quasi-judicial. And city council does quasi-judicial and legislative, takes those actions, right? So there's a heavy lift on both of your parts, I think, but that's fine. You know? But I think as part of this process, it'd be a good time to take a fresh look at everything and see if there's any way to maybe streamline it. But still get good results. I mean, that's what I think most communities are saying. We have all these reviews so that we get the best product, right? I think you can probably slim down some of that and still get a good product if you have a good code that you're working from, the code that reflects your vision. If you don't have one, you're spending more and more time in hearings and more and more time sitting in this room or wherever, talking about trying to fit, you know, square peg into a round hole kind of thing. So if you get the code where you want it, it should help streamline things. Removing duplicative sections, a lot of times, the code will just repeat itself over and over again. We can clean that up, and then... We can clean that up, and then there's some opportunities that you could do more staff review for things that don't require a public hearing or may not rise to the level of a public hearing. So we can take a look at all those things. Residential districts, you know, it's generally low-density residential. It's suburban and auto-oriented. Again, I don't think that's changed. You're relatively built out in that regard. Really, the focus is on those medium-to-high-density areas. How do we create fewer barriers to getting more of that infill, more of that mixed use that you're looking for, and making it, you know, not as cumbersome to get through that process, a little bit more by right? And your code is not that. You're falling back on the PUD or the PIDs because the base zoning just isn't there for what you're trying to do. So when I see communities using a lot of planned districts, that typically tells me that the base zones aren't calibrated to the market. So you're defaulting to these planned districts, and very, very common. But, you know, it also gives you a hearing on it, and you get to dive into the design and whatnot. I think there are ways we could still get good results without having to go through that process. And there are a lot of things that we can consider doing. And, you know, you've got all the stuff in here, the floor area ratio, and you've got every kind of standard there is, which is fine. We could probably do a little bit more form-based kind of building placement, scale and massing, without going through some of the more traditional, confusing zoning standards that we have in there. Non-residential districts, again, the slide got messed up a little bit, but, you know, there are some ways I think we can create some more context-appropriate districts. So most zoning codes, including yours, is sort of, it's a Euclidean code, right? Familiar with that? So it's a code that's use-based, it's use-segregation. So you have a list of zones, and then you put the zones wherever, you know, you want the use to be for that particular place. More and more, we're starting to see zones and districts that are calibrated to geographies, certain geographies. So it might be the...
Glen Lake.
Yeah, the Glen Lake zone, right, yeah. Or something like that. And that, what you can do there is you can specifically draw the district of where you want that to be, and then you can calibrate standards and uses that get to that outcome, that desired outcome, in that particular place. Now, you don't have to do this for 100 places. You pick the ones that are, you know, really opportunities for change, you know, four, five, six, whatever it is. The difference between that approach and what you have now is, let's say you go in and you change the business zone, or whatever your commercial district is. If you make a change, and you say, you know, you're allowed to have apartments by right up to X number per acre, you are doing that throughout the entire city. All business zones get that. And that's hard to do because people might not want density on every commercial zone throughout the entire city. So if you can be more surgical and more specific about where you want things, I think that's probably going to be a more effective approach for you than sort of the one-size-fits-all just menu that we've traditionally done in zoning. Of course, we have to look at your permitted uses, just to make sure that, you know, they're up to date, they're modern, they're getting, they reflect the diversity of the economic activities that you're looking for. And that is providing enough flexibility that it's sustainable. You know, a good example, office park. If the only thing that's allowed is office, you know, you're not helping that to survive. And think about, I mean, it came out of nowhere. You know, we had a pandemic. Who would have predicted a pandemic would have killed off the office market, right? Like, nobody in 2019 would have come up with this prediction. But it did it. And now places around the country are looking at their zoning and saying, oh, my gosh, we got to rezone all these business parks because they're not economically viable anymore. Okay. Natural resources, another big part of your community. Obviously, it's, you know, there are a lot of wetlands and other, there are a lot of, it's very wooded, it's quite nice. And so we want to protect that. We want to weave that in. We also want to look at open space requirements, impervious surface ratios, things like that, just to make sure that they're addressing your stormwater and making sure that we're being sensitive to your natural environment. And I know trees are an important thing, so, you know, maybe there are some more specificity we can put around this to avoid some of the, you know, more open, you know, concerns and allowing it to maybe stop projects where things are a little more ambiguous. So, a lot of talk, and I want to hear from you all, but overall recommendations, the one thing you could do that would improve everything if you didn't change a word of it, would just be to reorganize it, clean it up, get all the definitions in one place. I also saw definitions scattered throughout. That makes it really hard. I would put it all in one glossary, all the administrative procedures in one place. I would streamline all the districts, put in graphics, tables, charts, all that, to illustrate and both regulate and make it easy to understand. So we're looking for clarity, consistency, user-friendliness, equity as well, and resilience. And that all makes it more defensible. Separate standards and regulations from definitions. Your code does what a lot of codes do. They define the term and then regulate in the same sentence. That's just confusing. I would separate all of that. More how-to-use, make it easy-to-use navigation. And the next steps, sorry about these slides, they got goofy. The next steps, after you're done with the diagnostic, and if you want to proceed forward with a zoning code rewrite, really getting into the map, taking a look at, like we talked about, what special districts might we create to custom-tailor towards the development pattern we're looking for? What are those lists of zones in districts? And then what are the standards that we can put in place, both use and development, to get us to where we want to go? And then, that's a very public process, a lot of engagement, obviously led by the plan you've already adopted, and then we codify it and make it user-friendly, and then it's adopted. So it's usually about a 12 to 18-month process, depending. Quite a bit of community engagement, a lot of technical staff and consultant time, and a lot of time with you all. So it's definitely an involved process, but tends to be a rather, you know, useful exercise if you come out of it with something that's aligned to your plan and gets you there more simply. So that's all I have on that. I look forward to discussion and your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mayor, so we don't have your typical questions when you're in a study session, so this is a little bit different. It's more to kind of gauge questions, issues, things people are thinking about. So I'll turn it back to you at this point.
All right. Well, thank you, Julie. So what I would say is, you've had a presentation, we've had some critique on how we can make our zoning code better. And then I'm sure that there are, you know, we, as Planning Commission and as council, we're dealing with these issues all the time. We have different levels of history in terms of how maybe we got here. And when I was talking to Mike today, we thought, you know, I mean, our zoning code and our policies are incremental. We have an issue, we solve our problem, we solve that problem. And then, as appropriate, you put it in the code. But I think the very thing that has been described here is that, okay, the cohesiveness and the organization probably needs some work. And then there are probably things that, we've been through a pandemic. The worldview has changed in terms of significant parts of our city. So what thoughts and what questions do you want to share and get answered as we consider how to tackle the challenges of zoning in Minnetonka?
And I forgot to mention, too, Mayor, we have about 25 minutes for this portion.
Very good. I'll be a good time to...
Okay. Thank you.
So anyway.
Yes, so first of all, I wanted to thank Julie and her team for getting this grant and having this study done, and thank you to Zonco for like such a well-presented report and that is easy to read, easy to follow, and easy to understand. So I appreciate that. So my question is, you talk about design guidelines that are kind of woven through the code and pulling those out separate. So I'm not, it's not clear to me how it works currently as far as design guidelines. So, like, say, a developer brings forth a project that doesn't require any variances or any exceptions, meets all the codes, but they present just an awful, ugly building. Does, you know, does Planning Commission, is there input into that? Or what do the design guidelines do, and are they things that are requirements or suggestions?
Let me answer with the technical answer to your question, and then you can maybe expand on it.
Sounds good.
Okay. And I'll just go with first names, Kimberly. The answer about design guidelines, there are design guidelines loosely in the code today, mostly in 394. That's where you see the design guidelines. There's a list of products you can use on the buildings and that sort of thing. So I'm going to use that as the example of existing design guidelines, but for future.
Yeah, so it's sort of a continuum that can be, like you have now, which are sort of loose guidelines, not enforceable, but true guidance, not necessarily laws. Or you can go as far as to prescribe in regulations what materials, usually it's what materials you don't want, right? Just as an example, a lot of communities will say, we don't want vinyl siding on, you know, sometimes anywhere on the building, or on more than X percent of the building, or on the front facade, whatever it may be. Or we would want natural stone on some percentage. Another design guideline could be the garage placement. You know, the garage shouldn't be the dominant feature of the house. It should sit behind the house by so many feet. Those are just examples of things. There can be requirements, you know, the variation in roof forms and types, so that every house isn't exactly the same. You have a ton of that in Minnetonka, but, you know, to avoid that sort of cookie-cutter look. And so, yeah, there's a lot of things.
Historically, Minnetonka just hasn't done that kind of regulation when it comes to single-family, even, well, multifamily somewhat, but I would say, single-family or medium-density, absolutely not. There's no standard for design guidelines there. Another example would be like placemaking. So we have placemaking guidelines for Opus and Ridgedale. They're not laws, but they have a set of standards that we wish to implement with every redevelopment. So it's more redevelopment-based than it is for anything else. That make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Other questions? Paul?
Sorry, just following up on that. Can we, given that we're going to have the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan coming into play, is there any place for some of those considerations in terms of our zoning? And is that something that we, other communities are doing, or that we can do in terms of materials, design, things like that?
Absolutely, yes. So any kind of lead standards or materials that promote especially permeability of surface, things like that, reflexive, solar, all those kinds of things can be incorporated in. Those are the typical ones. But you could also do sustainable materials, up to X percent of your project has to be sustainable materials. There are a lot of things, but we'll see.
Energy efficiency.
Absolutely. Energy, that's the lead, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Alex?
Thanks for the presentation, Julie and Lauren, Sean. This is probably a pros and cons question for you, with all your 4,000 non-nerdy individuals downtown. We're here 40 years down the road since the last refresh. Should the city, in your experience, should the city mandate to itself that every 20 years, a zoning refresh has to happen so that they stay more current? What are the pros and cons to that?
I've heard it talked about, I've never seen it happen.
Why not?
I don't know. I think it's, it's just kind of, it's hard to, most places don't want to be so absolute about it. If it's working, they want to have to do it, I guess. I don't know, it's a tricky one to mandate that you legislate every so often. I don't know why it doesn't happen, but I've heard it talked about. I'd like to do it every five when you do a plan.
I'm in the business of writing zoning codes. There you go.
You're paying here, but I'm, you're paying here.
If I could, I just want to maybe expand on what you were saying. I think that sometimes you have to understand that you can't make all those changes that often because there's some predictability that you have to give the people that live or work or have businesses in your community about the expectations of what they bought, what they live in. So I do really think that is the basic issue of changing all the time. I think that Sean's right. When you have something major happening and you have market adjustments, you can see that in Minnetonka. We did the parking ordinance. We've done the tree ordinance twice since I've been here. You know, we responded to some need, and they were, those were big ordinances to write. They took a year sometimes at some points, you remember all of this. So I think it's really this kind of stability that a city wants to provide their residents and their business owners. And that's why they don't change it very often.
No, I hear that. I would say from a discussion standpoint, I'd push the city to challenge itself a little bit. Not every city has a Julie or a Lauren to be a steady hand at the wheel. And Julie, what happens when you guys are gone? You know, hopefully, Minnetonka has that steady hand, but to me, like every 20 years or something like that, versus 40, and kind of an ad hoc addressing of the zoning ordinance feels a little more thoughtful to the builders in our community.
Fair point, fair point.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Thanks, Brad. I really appreciated the report and the thorough nature of it. One of the things that the report brings up and is something that's been in relevancy in Minnesota is this missing middle issue. In your experience, I mean, you're seeing a lot of communities. Are there things that you've seen communities do that has accomplished some of that kind of development? And the one thing that I'm really concerned about in Minnetonka is, you know, we've got some one-and-a-half, two-acre lots with, I don't want to call them affordable housing, but more accessible, kind of naturally occurring, that my concern is unintended consequences where now you have a two-acre lot that you can put five $2 million houses on, and you've torn down a $500,000 house to do that. So anyway, that's maybe a two-part question. One is, what do you see encouraging that development? And two, what have you seen some unintended consequences?
Well, it's a great question. So missing-middle housing being that three-to-maybe-six, eight-unit buildings that we saw really a lot post-war in this country. You know, you don't see too many four-unit apartment buildings being built anymore, partly because of economics, but also because of zoning. And that's because most zoning codes are primarily single-family, and/or they're set up for garden-style apartments, right? So it's either a lot of units or one unit in a lot of codes. So that's one reason. What I've seen is that if you want to encourage two, three, four, five, six-unit buildings, which I think the economics of this community probably would be okay, would work, then it's all about the mapping. Where are those being located? Would I introduce that throughout all of your single-family zones? No, because then you have the problem that you've raised, which is taking a single-family down and either putting in a bunch of more units or a multifamily and a single-family. But along the edges, is what I've seen, on the corners, on the edges or some of your more principal roadways, allowing for that re... more principal roadways, allowing for that redevelopment to happen by allowing for, you know, three, four, five units on a property rather than capping it at one, that, that can work. But it's also, not only the map, it's the standards. So what is the scale and massing of that building? Is it, is it the scale and the mass of a single-family house that sort of blends in, like the 1920s we used to do? You know, if you live in a 1920s neighborhood, you might have a two-family or three-family mixed in with a one-family, like that's where I live. There's a four-family apartment two doors down from me, and that's just how it was done then. So, you know, in, in, in the right context, that's appropriate. And so, but you can make it of the scale, that makes sense for the community. So it can be done. It can be done. But again, all of this is, where's the right place for that? Would I recommend that you just throw away all of your single-family zoning and say, three to five units everywhere? No, that's not going to work for a suburban community where people bought in with the expectation that they had a single-family home with a yard and all that sort of thing. So, but the whole community doesn't have to be that, right? So we can infuse it where, where it makes sense.
Kizzy?
Oh, I was just going to respond, just, I mean, remember how expensive construction is too. I mean, we're going through the twin home construction plans that we have for one of the city-owned lots. I mean, it's $325 a square foot to build that unit. So I think, while it seems like it'll work, I can't see the math working without subsidy. At least we haven't seen a project like that. And with the land costs in Minnetoka, I think that then adds even more. So I think even with land out of the equation, that price is still quite steep. And so I think that still has to be reckoned with, even if you're allowing, and I think this, this concept of automatically allowing more density will create more affordability is a little flawed on that front. That's just what I think, because I've seen it and I've done the math, and it doesn't work. So we have to be careful about that.
I agree. I always call it the missing money, not the missing middle. And if you just run the numbers. It's, and you see, they see this kind of thing in very expensive places, where they can get $5,000 a month for a apartment, like, you know, Seattle and San Francisco, and, you know, it's just, it's harder to do for all the reasons you mentioned.
You might get the density, but you don't have the affordability.
Exactly. It's not going to be cheap unless it's subsidized, yeah.
Kizzy?
I'm sorry, Deb?
So my question was kind of similar. I think you kind of explained it, but my question was, or comment, I'm worried about, like, where you're going to build these mixed-use homes. And I'm worried about, like, certain areas being able to, certain areas where there's more vocal voices and more expensive homes saying, well, not in my area. And so I'm, I'm wondering, is there a strategy for that? Because that's what we tend to deal with in our city. And then also, I'm thinking about in areas, there's like, there was a joke about, like, the area where I live is like the lower end of Minnetoka, right? And we know that all the homes in Minnetoka are kind of expensive, but, you know, I'm worried about, like, certain areas of Minnetoka, you're putting more of the mixed-use homes in those areas versus spreading it out. I mean, even though you're saying, well, we can't roll back what we've already done, but I feel like it's important that we do push against that, and that we do make sure that we are spreading it out more, instead of just putting it in one area, and then making sure that even the areas where we have expensive homes, we still have some mixed-use there. Because why should places get a pass? To me, that's a getting a pass. Why should those areas get a pass of not having mixed-use homes in those spaces as well? So that's my thought process, and I'm wondering, how do we get there?
A lot of it's a great, I mean, that's a big, big issue, right? And we're seeing that all over the country too, is, is, you know, I, I want more affordable housing, I want more density, but not, not in my backyard, right? And so a lot of that is fueled by misconception. But I always look at communities and I say, you know, if you're really anti-multi-family, is it, there are a lot of reasons, as we know, why that might be the case, but it's also probably that you don't have a great multifamily stock, you know? And so the perception of it isn't great because it's old, or it's, you know, rundown, or whatever. And so I, you know, my, my argument there is build new, and, and that'll provide competition, and hopefully, they'll renovate those buildings, et cetera. But I think it's also about, how do you incrementally increase it? I think it's really hard if you were just to say, multifamily everywhere, right? I mean, that's going to be a hard sell, I think, just generally, legislatively. But I think if you, if you're strategic about it, and you can say, okay, here are the places that make sense throughout the community. We need to identify areas that, that make sense from a land use standpoint, and a, and a built form standpoint, and, and create that incremental density in those places. And it might be a three-family rather than a 60-unit apartment building. That's not going to be appropriate everywhere. I think you've, you've mapped those big parcels, because there's land. There's, there's land that's available. Those parking lots, like at the mall, most of the time aren't being used, let's put housing there. That makes a lot of sense for high, high-density, high-intensity housing uses. It's also walkable to amenities, but in the middle of a subdivision in the woods, probably not. But how do we, you know, increase, maybe provide some townhomes, some infill townhomes? Something like that would make more sense in that context. So it still has to be context-appropriate, but I agree, you know, it's a community-wide conversation. And, yeah, it's going to be a big policy question.
Deb, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I have some questions about the actual packet, but thank you, it is a wonderful packet. It was super informative and a lot to chew on.
Yes.
Thank you just now.
It is a lot.
It's a brave and very important thing that we are embarking on, so. First of all, I also want to acknowledge that, as we talk about, you know, we, we have people in the room that are really concerned about affordable housing with good reason, pretty much everyone in this room. And the point that we've heard over and over, but I just want to spell it out, is with new construction, affordable, affordable housing, the only thing that makes it affordable to the residents that live in it is subsidies. So when we think about, you know, I was at the EDAC meeting at Mills Church, those are $673,000 per unit buildings that are being made affordable through basically subsidies. So I just wanted to lay that out there. In the packet, there's a, there's a chart, starting on the 50, 50-something as you scroll, and it goes through the 60s. And it tells you, you know, if it, if it's meeting our goals, or is a barrier. And towards the end of that, you know, starting on like page 63 as you scroll, which would be 67, et cetera, maybe a couple of, page 62, which would be 66. It seems like it's offset because, so I'm just, I'm hoping we can get an updated chart so that I can wrap my mind around what we're meeting and what we're not meeting.
Yes, we'll do.
And I also wanted to, there are so many questions, so many questions, so I think about, I'll just ask two. So thinking about, I was trying to understand what, like, the height and setback averaging. I know what you're getting at, but it's hard for me to figure out, like, how does that work? What's an example? Like, how can I envision that? That's one question. And then a simpler question is, so let's say we had something like a commercial, a commercial zone, like those sort of generic designation, to make it more inclusive and less exclusive. But we have some commercial enterprises that are more controlled, so things like vaping, cannabis, liquor stores, you know, things that, how does that change with the, so those are just two questions that I'm.
Let me quickly answer her first, or her second question.
Sure.
Any of those other laws are not in the zoning ordinance, so liquor stores, tobacco, that sort of thing, that's outside of the zoning code. So that's, now your uses, however.
Except that, don't we have, like, it has to be so far from a school, so.
That's a policy.
It's a policy.
That's a policy.
Got it, okay.
Yep, that's your liquor policy. But go ahead and answer the rest of the question.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take a fresh look at all your uses, and, and where they're allowed, or where they're not allowed by right, but maybe by some special exception or conditional use. And more and more communities are looking at, you know, how do we not concentrate certain uses in one place? How do we not crowd out other land uses with, you know, the same land use? Used to come up with gas stations, came up with check cashing stores over the years, now it's vape shops, medical, or, I don't know if you have marijuana, I think you have all marijuana up here, right? Yeah, so.
Well, not yet, but it's out of the horizon.
All right, so, yeah, we're in the same boat in Ohio.
On a corner in your neighborhood.
Yes, yes. So that's another one that folks are looking at, how do we make sure that there's no concentration? There, there are ways we can do that in the zoning code. And your first question was about height setback averaging. So in a community that's largely built out and established like yours, I assume you're seeing some tear down? Yeah, it's tear down, it's happening. And a lot of times, the new house is like massive, right? And of course, with the values, they want to, they want to get every square inch they can on this thing, right? So, and it just looks goofy, and it crowds out light and privacy for maybe the person that has the ranch house next door. What averaging does is it either, depending on how far you go, it says, you know, you have to look at the existing setbacks for 300 feet in either direction, on the same side of the street, or 1,000, whatever you want to make it. And then you just average those so that the new construction is not out of place, it's within that tolerance of, of setbacks. Same with the height. And that just, you know, so if you're building a new house next to three ranches, I guess you need to be in line with what that ranch house height looks like, so.
It's kind of like our mansion policy.
Yeah.
Except with height instead of square footage. So it kind of addresses the same thing, but just a different way to attack it, if that makes any sense.
And square footage is hard, because you have to kind of come up with, you know, my idea of a big house might be different than yours, right? And so as a community, we have to come up with, what is too big of a house? And then you get in that argument and debate with people. I like the setback and the height, because it controls the, the massing and the scale of the building, without getting into, you can only do 3,000 square feet, but I want to do 4,000, you know, or 2,000.
We use, we use an average of floor-to-ratio.
In the neighborhood.
So that's good.
So we, I mean, that, that, I think we are getting very much the same things, but the rules are different, but, but it considers the same issues.
And that can work, that can work. It's, that's a little trickier.
Different way to do it.
Yeah, it's a different way to do it. I usually, it's interesting, I see some codes with floor-to-ratio in residential, usually that's a commercial concept, kind of came out of Manhattan, but it's been applied to residential. It's a little wonky, but if it works, it works, yeah.
I don't know. I've had it for a while.
And it just also makes me think about the, the minimum buildable area, something that you, that you address. And you, there was a suggestion of, you know, eliminating minimum buildable area, and so I wanted to know, what are the unintended consequences that could arise from that? You know, what, there's a minimum buildable area to make sure that you can build some kind of home, and then we get rid of that and tiny pieces.
I think there are a couple options there. You can, you can have the minimum buildable area, which we've done in some places, you can do an open space, an open space requirement, you can do a minimum landscape requirement, you can do a impervious versus pervious surface requirement. There are a lot of ways to do that. What's happening in a lot of communities is that the, the living, the, the under-roof is growing, but also the outdoor impervious patios and all that stuff. Yeah, sports courts, and all that is filling up the lot, and you're having runoff issues. So it's not necessarily just buildable area, it's really impervious surface percentages of the lot.
So we're going to, we're going to move on, but the mayor usually goes last, I didn't ask a question, so I do have a question for you. And it relates to something that you said, because in development, time is money. I mean, there's, there's no two ways about that. And, and you've talked about streamlining our processes, and some of the things that we've done have worked in the opposite direction, because, and I've been doing this for a while, but early in my time on the council, the sense that I got in talking to residents who were concerned about development in their neighborhood, was that by the time it comes to the city council, the train has left the station and the decisions have been made. And I was very sensitive to that concern, and I wasn't the only one. And as a result, we added some steps to our process. We do concept reviews now, so that we can see a concept before there's even a proposal. And so the project doesn't exist, the clock hasn't started, but we have an idea of what's coming, and if, if we, if there are concerns, if it's not going to work, plus the, the public becomes aware of what's happening. We don't take public engagement in concept reviews, but we, we used to and decided that's the wrong way to do it. But, but we, you know, it allows the, the people who are going to be most affected by it in the neighborhood to be aware of what's coming, and, and we, and so we stretch things out and just provide more information. Now, that's costly. Hopefully, when you do a concept review, you, you can do it with, in a more bare-bones fashion, and a potential builder or developer hasn't spent, you know, a lot of money to get to that point. But obviously, they have to spend some money to, to do those concept reviews. And that's my question. I mean, you know, people want, I mean, I'm a firm believer, people know this, that, you know, the local level is where to tackle these things. We do not want to have things imposed upon us by the legislature, by the county, or whatever. We, we like local control, but at the same time, recognizing that time is money, and, you know, kind of balancing that, so that people are informed, while at the same time, you know, if we can, if we can streamline processes, people are going to be more interested in developing in Minnetoka. So what thoughts do you have along those lines?
Oh, a lot. And that's something we, we definitely, it requires a longer conversation, but one, the one is the concept review. We see this a lot. The concept is becoming less and less conceptual, and more and more.
Project-like?
Yeah. What, what are those materials on the front of that building? So now the architect's designing the building, right?
Right.
And then, and then they're coming back three, I don't know about here, but.
The planning commission's all laughing. Look at them.
In some communities, in some communities I'm working in, they're coming back five and six times with revisions, which is just extraordinarily expensive. And by the time they're done, they might as well just have permit drawings ready to go, you know? But then if they get a thumbs down, because, you know, then people come out and they, and they say, we're anti-to it, it's just, it's, it's, it's a very expensive process.
Well, and that's, and that's the thing. I mean, you know, I, I think the goal is to, to be open, and, you know, we always hear the word transparent, but at the same time, I think we're starting to deal with some of the unintended consequences of that, and so maybe we need to take a step back, because, I mean, I do remember one time, a developer came with, essentially it was an Excel spreadsheet with X's on it, in terms of where his properties, or his buildings were going to be, and I do remember kind of snickering in the background, saying, that was a concept? I mean, you know, and so, but he didn't spend a lot of money on it, you know? But, you know, so, but, but I think the unintended consequence of trying to do things the right way sometimes take you down that path, and then, and that's a problem as well, so. And that'll be a separate conversation, next time you come to town.
There you go. Sounds good.
All right, I think we're, Julie, if you want to wrap it up.
If I just can wrap it up, we're going to come back in July and have another conversation, and kind of project for you what the timeframe is. Do you have some ideas there, Lauren, about what that is?
Yeah, I mean, you can pre, oops.
And then he turns his mic off.
You had previewed it earlier, back for the July 15th study session, I think was our date. And so we'll kind of package up a housing discussion and a zoning discussion together. I think those two are relatable enough to continue to talk about, and then we'll decide what next steps are after that conversation. we'll decide what next steps are after that conversation. So hopefully be more informed.
Excellent. I think Mike, Mike wants to say something too.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Julie and Lauren summarized it, but I just, I want to go back just real quickly to, I think, a point Alex made or question Alex had earlier just on timing. And I think Kimberly and I also talked about this earlier today. Just I think for everyone's benefit, and I think we'll cover this in July as well. When you think about doing a zoning code update and just the timing of this and how it aligns with the comp plan, future comp plan. So it's, you know, 2024. And I think you heard tonight, it could take 12 to 18 months to go through a zoning rewrite. And I think I'm at least watching body language in the room that this is probably the path that we're on for all the reasons we've talked about. So if you think about starting that process, we're going to get us into, if we do start in 2026, the next comp plan update is 2028. And so starting for that comp plan process, we'll start that in 2026. And so that's a two-year process to get to a comp plan update in 2028. I think at that point, going through this big rewrite right now does make a lot of sense. And perhaps you can just touch on that real quick, why it makes sense to do that today. Because then going through our comp plan rewrite in 20, starting in 2026, that gets completed in 2028. Then I would submit that in probably 29 or 2030, we come back and do perhaps a very quick refresh on this project where you can get our comp plan all updated in 2028, come back and then do some tweaking if we have to to this plan.
For the vision.
For the vision. Correct. So I think that's how we see, I think, that kind of the timing of all that playing out.
Right. Agreed. Absolutely.
Very good. All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you all.
We appreciate your report. And we'll take a, what, a five-minute break or so and come back. Thank you. Mic'd up. And welcome. And Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Brad, Mayor, Council.
Yeah, Planning Commission, you do not have to stay if you have other things to do, but there's no secrets here. So you're welcome to stay if you'd like.
I hope you do. Stay.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Brad. Really going to turn it over to Mr. O'Day and Ms. Westy here in a second to introduce our consultants on the project, just to give you.
We're the first time this, that's Kelly and Sarah.
Kelly, Sarah, I know.
Just help you out.
Thank you. I know it's, it's study session, so I, you know, we kind of get stuck in that formal mode all the time. Well, thank you. Kelly and Sarah will introduce our consultant and our team here in a second. Just want to give you just a two-second intro. Again, this is something we've been working on for a number of months. And Kelly and our consultants will get into all of that. It's exciting. And I know I've talked with all of our council as we've led up to today. Big presentation, I know, tonight. We have a little over an hour to go through it. And we anticipate, again, bringing more information back to you. And we'll tease out some questions throughout the presentation here this evening. We'll have some breaks as we introduce, or I say we, they, introduce the projects and the overview of really the four facilities that we'll be discussing this evening. And eventually, we're going to, as you know, Council, need to get to some level of decision-making about the future of all these projects. And so certainly, we look forward to the conversation, hearing more input from you and questions that you have for staff. And then we'll, again, we'll be looking for a direction a little bit tonight if we can.
Sure.
And then certainly bringing more back to you here later. So with that, I'd like to really just turn it over to Kelly and Sarah for introductions.
Sounds good.
Yeah, if you could make the introductions for us, that would be great.
Of course. And as you all know, the reason why we're here is last year, early last year, we purchased the Marsh. After we purchased the Marsh, we thought it was responsible to take a look at all of our recreational facilities to determine the future uses of those. So we're here tonight with the community facility study. We're looking at the Marsh, the Williston Fitness Center, the Community Center, and Glen Lake Activity Center. The city then hired HGA to help us in this process. So tonight, we have Glenn and Nancy from HGA. The way it's going to go tonight will be, they'll go over a few, probably about five to seven slides that talk about the study in general. And then we'll get into each facility specifically. So they'll have a couple of slides per facility, then we'll stop, do some back and forth, get some feedback from you all, ask some questions, and then just continue on. So I will.
And then Kelly, would it help if we went around it and introduced ourselves because they weren't here when we did that?
Sure. I think that's a good idea.
We'll.
Yes, thank you.
We'll do that. Pardon me.
Perfect. We'll start.
With Miranda.
Miranda, I'm an Assistant City Manager.
Sorry about that. Mike Funk, City Manager.
Yep.
Deb Calvert, City Council at Large.
Pardon us. Okay. And I'm Brad Weersum. I'm the mayor.
City Council Ward Two. Kizzy Copley, City Council Ward Four.
Kimberly Wilburn, City Council at Large.
Go ahead, Dana.
Need a meeting, Planning Commission.
Paula Rameley, City Council Ward Three.
Patsy Foster-Wolton, Ward One.
All right. Now we'll turn it back to you.
Yep. Over to Glenn and Nancy. Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. It's great to be here this evening. I'm going to start off with just this first topic one, going over the visions and guiding principles for this project. So we started with a large core team, many of the folks who are in this room, to help guide us as we looked at those four facilities, really thinking about who these facilities are going to serve, making sure it's broad group, broad age demographic, and that it's, needs to support your strategic vision. So thinking about cost-conscious equity and making sure it's a long-term investment for the city. And success was really broadening the programming that's offering and making sure you're meeting the needs of residents. The guiding principles for this project were really clear, really thinking about the unique character that the parks offer, trying to think about equitable approach so that it's not just the usual users, but everyone here in the city and the folks who work here, connecting people to outdoors. So thinking about active living, really, again, focused on your residents living their best life and resiliency, making sure we're making long-term decisions again. We partnered with ZAN Associates as part of a design team to do the community engagement. And it was a very robust process. We were reaching both frequent users of these four facilities, but also trying to reach those who don't come. And so that really focused on thinking about renters especially, but also senior groups and making sure we were meeting people where they were at. And so that showed up with six pop-up events, which is the top bar there, and, and also reaching out to some affinity groups to amplify the message for folks to be aware of the study and to participate in the study. And the results were great. We got about almost 1,300 responses to the online survey, which is a really excellent response. Some key themes, you know, across all four, we're really thinking about broadening the use of programming and services offered. People love what they're participating in. They want more of that as well as new offerings. Broad age demographic, trying to offer from young people to older people, broadening accessibility so that the facilities can be accessed by anyone, thinking about parking as well, and, you know, improving the look and feel of many of those spaces. So with that, we're going to focus on the four individually.
All right. So the four, of course, are Glen Lake Activity Center, this building here, the Community Center, Williston Fitness Center, as well as the Marsh. We'll end on the Marsh. But starting with the Glen Lake Activity Center, we did a few things for each one of these facilities. We talked to staff. We went through the engagement to try to get as much information as we could about how the facilities were used, what was working well, what wasn't working well. So Glen Lake, as you may know, is currently being used as a meeting space, a police substation, and also maybe its primary function is storage for, you know, the optimists and some community groups. So it's really underutilized currently, and it's dated, you know, was built quite a while ago. The roof's ready for replacement. And so there's an opportunity there. I'm sorry, let me talk a little bit about our, some engagement findings. I'm not going to go into much detail about this, but what we did learn was not a lot of people were really using Glen Lake. And when they were, it was infrequently. So a couple of options rose to the surface there. One is to demolish the building, remove it entirely to free up that site, perhaps for a regional skate park or some other function. Option two is to actually keep the, a portion of the building, renovate it into a meeting room, upgrade it for accessibility, and sort of to meet current code and refresh it, and demolish a portion of it, the police substation, the non-code compliant restrooms to make room for more either skate park or other park functions. And so we've got those couple of options have costs associated with them. Option one, to demolish the building is 100 and, almost $113,000. To keep the building and renovate it, the cost is about $838,000.
So Mayor, we're going to, like I said, we're going to just take a few slides per facility, then kind of take a few. We're going to have a couple prompting questions, you know, basically giving your feedback on the options that we have. So we really have three, you know, option one, to remove the building, option two, to, you know, do a partial demo and building renovation, or three, continue as is. So.
Right.
We're just going to send you back a couple of questions. If you have questions for staff or the consultants, we just have to answer. But we'd kind of like to just pause, get back to you and have a quick discussion on each facility.
Okay, as we go. So right now, okay, are there any que, Rebecca?
I don't have any questions, but it's a dump and we should demolish it. Say that again. Oh, it's a dump. It's such. I mean, you drive by it and it's not an attractive looking building and it's not worth, say, keeping.
Patsy?
I agree. But at the same time, if we were just leave it as it is and keep it, how, I mean, would there be like some kind of timeline, like let's leave it for a year?
Or two years or five years or whatever? Because I feel like even 100 and some thousand dollars is a lot for this.
Yeah, I guess I think, you know, when we look at just leaving it as, as we can definitely do that, I think, until we have a project. And so, you know, you, I don't think we're at council last year when the skate park came or was about to come to the city council.
Right.
So that will likely come back to the city council this year. We do have a skate park funded in 2025. We did somebody else to the best location and Glen Lake was the best location for that. So I think those kind of tie together.
Okay.
But yes, we, we definitely would continue. We wouldn't just tear it down right now. I think we would wait till we have some type of plan for the, plan for it.
Can I ask another one? So then, so would the skate park and all that just even out the cost of tearing it down? So it would be just like.
No.
It would still cost $100,000 to tear it down?
It would still cost $100,000. Now, we do have funds already funded in the.
The CIP for 2025 for the skate park, including this $112,000.
Okay.
We did increase that from last year into this year. Correct?
Thanks.
And one more related question. I trust that the, you know, the partial demo of the building and renovation at $838,000 would include a new roof for that building. And I was just curious, you know, if we're just saying, okay, leave it as is, but the roof's really bad, we need to replace the roof, how much is that about?
I believe we had $75,000 allocated in 2024. We decided not to do that.
Right.
Because the study was a promise. And we would not do that until we knew what the future was.
Yeah, you know, and, and in term, did you have something? You know, I was just going to, like Rebecca did, I'll share my opinion on this, that, you know, the, I don't believe this is the highest and best use of this land, particularly given what we know about the skate park. You know, if we didn't, if we didn't have an alternative, I mean, I know that the optimists store things there and things. And, you know, and when, when you get rid of storage, you have to find more storage. So it's not like it's not without utility. But, but that, that building is well past its useful life. It's not, it doesn't get much use. I think I've been in there a couple of times in my many years of living in Minnetaka. And it just does not get much use. And so I'd say if there's, that's valuable land and a great location, and there are good things to do with it, I, my preference would be to go a higher, higher, better use. Paula and then Kizzy.
Just a question, follow-up related. Assuming that the skateboard park does go forward and we already have funding approved for that, and we would need facilities there, restroom and other facilities, would it be more cost-effective and better for the park design? You know, we could do expanded, better park design without the building there. And then would it be probably, it seems to me, more cost-effective to do something that is more contemporary design, sustainable, better building codes, and try to rehab that old building for that purpose? So if we find that we do need something later on, it would probably, I'm wondering if it would be more cost-efficient to do that at that time, working around the skate park design rather than vice versa?
Al, do you, either of you want to take a stab at that or not?
Yeah, one thing I would say is if it's just facilities to support a skate park, it might be, you know, a couple of restrooms, maybe a little shade structure. It's going to be less scope than a complete renovation of, you know, a building that's got meeting rooms, needing all the mechanical spaces as well as the restrooms. And so at, at worst, it's probably a wash would be my guess.
Thank you. But then it allows a little bit more design flexibility in terms of the skate park by demolishing.
Yeah, it does. The site is rather constrained in terms of parking. So, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Kizzy?
I just, I just had a question about, like, how many folks really know about the community, the Activity Center? I know, I mean, I lived out here and I seen it because my kid played baseball or whatever, but I had never been in the building. And recently, I've got a chance to go in the building. And so my question would be, could it be possibly used for something else? I mean, I know y'all say it's like horrible and it needs to be torn down, but has there been, I know there's been surveys, but like, is it possible that it could be used for something else? I mean, I can imagine things to go in that building. I don't know how many other folks can imagine things, but yeah, I, I don't see it as it needs to be torn down. I see it as being used for something else, you know? But are we marketing it enough? That's my thought process.
Yeah, good question. I think, you know, what we typically use it for is just rentals. So we're getting a lot of, you know, Boy Scout troops and things like that that use a facility. It's probably about 300 hours a year, which is not much. So in general, the facility isn't used that much. When we did the survey, we did ask about what they use it for, what they would like to, you know, our residents, what they would like to see. And we just didn't really get any, you know, massive responses for anything specifically. So I'm sure you could use it for other things. We just didn't hear too much from the public on this one, as far as the community engagement.
All right. Anything else? All right. We'll keep moving on. I hope that was a little direction.
All right. Next stop, while we're here. This, this facility, the Community Center, as you all may know, there was a project that was sort of stopped, done in its tracks when the Marsh was purchased. So when we did the assessment of this, the recommendations, I'm going to keep going. Well, sorry, I'm skipping ahead a little bit. The things that are working well is that it doesn't feel like a senior center, belongs to all sorts of different functions. You know, we're having a great meeting here today. It works well for events. You know, this space has strong rental. There's great natural light in the building. Wayfinding and accessible routes to the senior spaces has some challenges as do the social spaces within the lobby. And so that was really the focus of that earlier project, including a new reception desk. And you'll see that the survey takeaways, this is just one of the highlights, you know, enhancing the seniors programs, programming, health and wellness classes. And then the kind of in third there, outdoor gathering spaces are the, the things that people who use this facility would like to see enhanced. And so at the, at the end of the day here, the recommendations were to kind of stay the course and implement the project that was originally planned in 2022. And I'll show you some numbers that were, have been escalated to today's dollars. And then there were a couple of other options here indicated with the number four on the, on the plan diagram on the right. One is the kind of skinny rectangle on the very east end of the building is to provide a more direct lobby connection to the Glen Lake Activity Room. Currently, you have to walk through the office area to get to that. Not a huge deal, but it might be an improvement to add a new lobby space that could serve that space. The other additional improvement was the space right outside these doors to create more of a lounge sort of coffee bar area. So between those two options, as well as the original improvements to wayfinding, and then on the upper level, doing some more wayfinding to get people in a, in a more intuitive way to the Purgatory Creek Room that's currently used for seniors fitness. That's a kind of a minor change in addition to the original plan to renovate the restrooms and meeting spaces on the upper level. We would just sort of stay the course with that. So that is the, on the upper left here, moving forward with those existing plans, we've escalated those to $20,000. That's the new lobby finishes, wayfinding, renovating the restrooms and kind of refreshing the public spaces and restrooms and also meeting rooms. That's $2.7 million. And then those alternatives that I mentioned, the additional core. And then those alternatives that I mentioned, the additional corridor, that's number one below. We've given kind of a cost range without, lacking a design. We just had our cost estimator provide a range. So anywhere from three hundred and forty-six thousand to four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for that addition. Or the internal renovation of this lounge area, lobby lounge area into more of a coffee bar, that can be, you know, upwards of fifteen thousand dollars.
So back to you, Mayor, with kind of some of the same questions, you know, what are you thinking? And or, you know, we also have the option to just kind of continue to move as is.
Right. So council thoughts, you know, just as was indicated, the, we had, we were, we had approved a project and we were moving forward with the renovation of this space to be more competitive. And that was, that was going, we were getting into that and then, and then the opportunity to purchase a marsh came up. And so we put that on hold to take a more holistic look. So now we've got a more holistic look, we're getting that report tonight, but any thoughts on these options? Kimberly?
We had, when we had our smaller presentation, I had asked and I'm just wondering if it's still under consideration of moving the senior fitness to the Marsh or, you know, a facility that's for, like, so Marsh or Williston. Since that, it, it seems kinda odd to have fitness classes here. I mean, I get that, like, having, you know, one place that's sort of considered where all the senior activities happen. So anyway, I guess that is, is that something that's been considered and rejected or?
Yeah, you know, I can take that. I think that's more of an operational question and I think we have talked about that internally. And so that is something that's still on the table. You know, that second floor talked about just wayfinding to get to the Purgatory Creek Room. I think that if the senior fitness programs were to go over to the Williston Center or communities or to the Marsh, I think we would probably have other, other classes that would go there too. So I don't know that it affected the design, but I think just as we talk internally with recreation staff, I think that it was a good point and making sure that we're consolidating where we can to make sure things are efficient, yes.
Rebecca?
I have a question, and then I'll give you my thoughts, but I, we, maybe we talked about this a few years ago. Do we think that we could raise the rental costs once we have a little bit more of a desirable aesthetic facility?
Yes, I think we can. We do look at rental rates of our competitors and other cities every year to make sure we're kinda within range. But knowing that our building is a little bit dated, I think that if we were able to refresh that, we could, could bump that up definitely.
I mean, I just think it's overdue, particularly, you know, the restrooms. If we're, I mean, that would be a deterrent, I think, for me. If I were looking at a budget place for, even a budget place for a wedding, I would go into those restrooms and be like, I can't do it. So I think we're losing and missed opportunity and I just, you know, as much as I hate to spend the money, it's, it's just, it's tired and it needs the refresh, one way or another.
Other thoughts? Paula?
One quick thing. Could we make this, I don't know, kind of a wait and see? Cause we're getting ahead of myself with the, the Marsh situation. This doesn't have any options for outside funding. This is gonna have to be self-financed through our, you know, levies and whatever, CIP. Whereas the Marsh has some bonding and other opportunities for outside grants and, and state grants and funding. So, you know, could we kind of have a sliding, you know, let's see what happens with that and how much money that saves? And then put it into some of these other projects like this, which I agree with Rebecca, that could really use a refresh.
Yes, definitely an option is to continue as is and look at different funding.
Or doing some basic cosmetic things that, you know, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars. And I think that was my idea for the coffee lounge. So I appreciate that, that was more of a way before knowing about the Marsh. You know, if we could put EV chargers where the Marsh is and those go in, that would be great. But my thought was to have places where people could meet, and that was before the cafe opened up in the Marsh. So people could have a place to meet and work while they're waiting for their cars to charge.
Definitely, yeah, I think, you know, the, the community center is operating like it has been. It's doing well. We definitely have the option of continuing as is and or doing some minor improvements if we wanted to do that. We, you're correct, it is not funded. We don't have funding for that project right now. We would have to research that and work with our finance department and figure out what the best options would be. But we could look at, you know, smaller renovations. I don't know if it's possible to just do one of the restrooms or some of the restrooms. I'd hate to do, do something and then have to come back and redo it. We'd, I'd hate to do that, but, you know, we could definitely look at and see if there's some smaller things that would help.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Brett. I would just add to the whole conversation and that, you know, Darren Nelson sitting back here behind us, the finance director. I think as we talk through all of these matters, whether it's the, whether Glen Lake, for example, go back to the Glen Lake, where if we end up raising the building against a hundred thousand dollar cost, we would likely weave that as into the project cost with a skate park, like Kelly had mentioned. With this cost, it's currently unfunded, but as we again migrate the rest of this evening into the Marsh conversation, whatever you end up deciding we should invest in, that's what Darren and, and I will get involved in, in coming back to you with, with how that gets funded and when it can get funded. So these, this is a bonding opportunity, just like probably mainly the Marsh too. Any investments that we make will require some sort of level of bond issuance. But that's the work that we'll do between now and our next conversation is bringing back to you financing options, funding sources and, and how that can all happen and when. Darren, you anything to add to that?
Other thoughts, anyone?
Like I was saying to people, I wish, I wish the city could win the lottery.
Well, I got an, I got an email that said that I, I do get a piece of it if I click on this right here. Yeah, I didn't, I haven't clicked yet, but I'm looking forward to that, but I did get that email.
Just right behind you, so watch it.
I'm pointing, I, I found the smaller meeting that, that Paula and I had with staff a little, a little more helpful because there was more of a holistic and not the sequential, you know, this is what we're doing with Glen Lake. This to me is more interconnected with what we're, we want to do with the Marsh. And so this kind of sequential, you know, what do we wanna do here? If this was all by itself, yeah, whatever. Do, do I in my heart feel like option one makes the most sense because it's, because everything's really, needs updating? Yes, you know, but I, I, I'm finding it hard because there, there are a lot of needs at the Marsh and we wanna make sure that, that, you know, as, as we progress on our thoughts about the Marsh, that it, that it's financially sustainable and, you know, the, our, we, we have a tolerant resident population, but, but these are, these are real dollars. So, I mean, in my heart, I really do feel like, you know, we need the refresh. And I think in the other original proposal, we also was gonna redo this. That's not, that's not here. So, you know, we're talking about lobby, we're talking about meeting rooms, but that is not.
It was included, I think we just forgot to highlight it. I apologize for that.
The same project essentially, right?
Correct.
Yeah, apologies for any confusion on that, but it's the exact same construction project.
I mean, you know, we're in a mustard yellow room.
Well, that's really great, great coupon, really.
Yes, great. Yeah, so anyway, I, I, we need, we need to fix up where people live.
So I'll, I'll comment too unless, I don't wanna, you know, I think this project, we had, we had approved this project and we were moving forward and then, and then the Marsh opportunity came up. And I, I mean, I agree, we have to, we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for this stuff. I mean, it's easy, it's easy to want it, it's much more challenging to pay for it. And, but, but I also think that, given the use of this community center and this building for all of its different purposes, we need to compete and it's a competitive world out there. So, you know, I am supportive of option one, you know, within the context of what we're gonna see next. Because, you know, we, there is going to be some picking and choosing, but, but I really think that, you know, this space is, is fundamental and, and it, it does need updating. And I think we, you know, when I, when I think of, you know, people having a wedding here and things like that, and I've had family members who've had weddings here, you know, and, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a nice space, but it needs, it needs a, it needs a little bit more. So I, I think it's a, I think that would be a wise spend, that would be in the public interest. All right, keep going.
All right. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Williston Fitness Center. What's working well there is really probably what you might expect. The youth amenities, splash pad, the treehouse, the swim lessons, that sort of thing. There's a lot of members there. It's got a great tennis program. Fitness is kind of outgrowing its space, which we'll talk about a little bit. Some things that aren't working as well, the locker rooms, the public spaces in the building could use an upgrade for a more consistent look and feel and wayfinding too for users of the building. The tennis viewing area is a little challenged and we'll talk about the fitness space in a moment. Pickleball came up on this and you'll see a potential solution for that and parking. Parking at Williston is really a challenge. So, and I wanna mention this, you know, some of the things the city could use are some pickleball courts, indoor turf and gym space. And the, some key takeaways from the engagement survey, fitness was super popular as well as the swimming programs. So fitness, splash pad, weightlifting, cardio, all of that stuff was just really, really popular. There's an other category there that we sort of unpacked down below and that includes the more swimming play, the treehouse, the splash pad, and then the sports related functions like the batting cages and the basketball courts are all important to community members. And really the, the suggestions were more fitness, more fitness, improve the locker, locker rooms. Pickleball is very popular, so there are a lot, there was a lot of discussion about increasing access to pickleball. And just some general comments about upgrades. It's really a family friendly place, which differentiates it from perhaps the Marsh. One of the comments, Kelly, that, or observations you made during our meetings was each one of these facilities really has a different area of focus or flavor or character. And, and really you could figure out how to play to those strengths and increase the programming. So the, the comment about senior fitness over at the Marsh was really kind of aligned with some of the questions we had about programming. So the recommendations for the, for Williston are a bit more complex than the other projects. So I'll go through it and if you have some questions, go ahead and stop me. So this is a floor plan of the building, the tennis barn's on the left. You'll see number seven, the, the dashed gray box on the right. That's we're proposing additional parking along the east side of the building to try to take some of the, the load off of the existing parking lot. Locker room improvement, I'm sorry, I'll go in order. Number one, lobby and public spaces, improving wayfinding, kind of look and feel, refreshing it. A new reception area that works a little bit better for patrons and for staff. Expanding that space by moving some of the offices and relocating them to the, essentially a new floor above the existing treehouse. So a lot of these options are kind of interrelated or mutually exclusive. But if we can steal some of that space from the offices to provide for better viewing of the tennis area, that was, would address one of those comments. Number two is that moving the office to that location above the current treehouse location, which I'll get to where the treehouse goes in a minute. Number three, some rental spaces. Right now there's personal training, storage, and then just space above the treehouse. Again, put it, filling in the floor there to provide some other potential rental spaces. Number four, the kind of teal color, the L shape, that is expanding and renovating all of the locker rooms. That, that's kind of a pain point for patrons right now, the, the use of the locker room. So making sure that they're, they're meeting the needs. And then five, where there's an existing kids programming area, actually converting that to be more fitness space, perhaps relocating personal training there adjacent to the current fitness areas to the north. And then six is aquatics. We discussed expanding the splash pad area, perhaps increasing it, it's used by older, older kids as well as young ones as part of that. That's the main level. The lower level is the level of the tennis barn. That's this level that I'm showing you now in this plan. So twelve, number twelve is the tennis barn itself, I'll start with that. The only thing we really talked about for the tennis barn itself is adding air conditioning to just to improve people's experience there. Number eight, improving the lobbies, lobby spaces similar to the lobbies up above. Nine and ten are all where the existing treehouse is, kind of expanding the party rental function of that and then adding a new treehouse play area as part of an addition that's indicated by this blue bar across the, the lower end of the diagram here indicated with eleven. Having that indoor play space be a full double height space as part of a new addition to the building that could also accommodate four pickleball courts or perhaps two half basketball courts. Those could be flexible gym spaces. So there's, we're proposing kind of a, an à la carte menu, I'll, I'll call it, of potential renovations to Williston. That could be prioritized, that could be, I won't go through all of the, the costs, but I will talk about the total range of costs. On the low end is sixteen point, just about sixteen point six million dollars. On the high end, twenty point two million dollars. So, and that includes the building additions, the, including aquatics.
Council comments?
I'll start.
Rebecca?
I mean, this one really pains me because I am a Williston user and I have developed a relationship where people like to tell me about how much they need more pickleball space. And so I'll probably, you know, I, but I am very sensitive that we can't be everything to everybody. We have to be careful. I mean, Williston is like a reliable pair of shoes. Like you know you need to do something about it, they, it still works, it's, you, you reach for it all the time. We'll lose that if we don't keep up with it. So I am so conflicted on this because I'd like to see our attention, I think, to the Marsh and what needs to happen there. But Williston is just such a great community asset that I'd love to, there's nothing here that I don't think makes sense. So I'm very torn, but I think in kind of the continuum of what we need to prioritize, at least for right now, feels like we need to put our attention towards the Marsh. Now, if there was a way that we could make it all work, I, I think we would ju, we could justify and eventually pay for itself with Williston and the use and all of the extra fees that people pay for parties and rentals and tennis and all of that. I mean, it's probably a good investment, but I would put it probably lowest on the priority list of all the other things.
Other comments, Patsy?
Yeah, I'm not a member now, but I, but I was and I loved the Williston and I would go no matter what. So if you touched it, if you updated it, I would go, but if you didn't, I would still go. And I think that's true of a lot of the people that go there, especially the fitness people. But I agree, I mean, it's, it's, it's needs a lot, but I, I, it's, it's, I think an old shoe is a perfect way to describe it cause I'll still wear those.
Old comfortable shoe.
Yeah.
Comfortable shoes, but, but I mean, like an old one too where it's, it's, they're, they're worn out, but I still wear them anyway. You know what I mean?
You're gonna hurt your knees that way, Patsy.
I'm gonna wear them until I can't. I'm gonna wear them until I can't anymore, so.
So.
I love that place.
Other comments?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with, with the comments that are being made. I, you know, I'm putting it in the context of also the public safety study. I mean, there are a lot of people needs that we're talking about here, and none of them are cheap, and they're not gonna get any cheaper either. That's, that's kind of the other thing, is like, do we need pay now, or do we pay later? That eventually we'll have to pay.
At the sounds of thing, you can do both.
Yeah.
And so, you know, in that smaller presentation, it's, it wasn't all or nothing, but it was, it was more here, like, all or nothing. The things that are going on at the Marsh can be sort of like prioritized, but if we pull the trigger on certain things, it makes more sense to do all of it or not of it. So, I kind of feel like you're feeling like maybe this isn't the right time, and we do what we need to do to get the Marsh fully up and running, or, you know, more functional and more self-sustaining. And I agree with what Patsy said, you know, it's a comfortable old shoe, and I wear mine until you can't wear them anymore. So, I think there are a lot of things that would make life so much better for staff, for the experience walking in and the things that you're trying to accomplish. And I, like Rebecca, I also, there is not anything that seems to bother, like, so it's very painful to like, and, but as, you know, you see 20 million dollars right there, and then you have, you know, the fire stations and, you know, other fire, I mean, just the fire trucks are absolutely, it's so much that I just, oh.
Any other comments?
I was gonna say, I said this, I think I said this when Kelly and my cat showed the presentation with Kimberly and Patsy. I said, why can't we just get rid of all the buildings and get the Plymouth Community Center? But, you know, we can't do that, but, you know, I think about the expense that it's gonna take to get Williston up to par, and that's a, that's a pretty penny, you know, and I just don't think now's the time, especially with the Marsh. But I guess, I don't know, the Marsh was an opportunity that we couldn't pass up, so because that was an opportunity, we couldn't pass up, we jumped on it. But now, I'm just like, is it, is at the cost of the Williston? So, I just don't think we can do all the projects, like, we want to, but we just can't. So, yeah, I guess, you know, we need to wait for Williston for a while, because just can't, I can't see it, so.
Yep.
Wouldn't be comfortable.
Paula?
Yeah, and I, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the comments and agree with many of them. I would say that I think, keeping in mind the Plymouth, if I'm recalling correctly from the mayor's comments there, that was an 80 million dollar project.
Well, I think it was 50.
Forty, fifty?
Construction, construction was around 42.
Okay, so then with design and everything else, I knew, I knew it was 50s or 60s. So, if we had 50 or 60 million dollars to spend, then, you know, that's kind of taking care of all of these too. So, we would have our Plymouth Center, I guess, if we were gonna do that. But at the end of the day, I think, I agree with, with Deb, it's really hard to, you know, look at these things, because I feel that in the back of my mind, I'm always going back to the next project we're gonna talk about, because so much is gonna, of our decision-making on these other projects is gonna flow from what we decide on that project. So, yeah, so I'm gonna wait and withhold comments, again, agree with everybody else, love Williston, my kids went there, kids, I had parties there, we, you know, did everything there, growing up as a family, and, you know, trying to balance the needs of our family-focused facility versus this new facility that's coming online that's gonna be really, you know, kind of geared more towards our senior population, which is gonna be increasing. We are gonna be 40%, I think, over 55 by 2028. And so, you know, that, that's something to keep in mind, so I'll end my comment there and look forward to the next.
And, you know, that just gets me thinking though, also, we have to prepare for that, it's something, you know, it's important, but also, I do get worried that we, I don't want to exclude younger people either, and I do want to make sure that we are paying attention. However, we have to remember that we just, as I said, go ahead and tear down Glen Lake and build the skate park, so I feel like we are.
How many pickleball courts could we fit in that Glen Lake activity center?
There you go.
With the noise pollution.
Save the day. I can take my Groucho Marx glasses off.
I think the new skate parks are a little bit more curvy than.
Okay. So, you know, to keep moving here, because we want to get through this, and we also want to get done kind of on time, you know, I'm kind of working two sides of the equation here. On the one hand, you know, I, I look at the not working well list at Williston, and none of those are a big deal to me. I mean, you know, what's not working well is not working terribly, it's just not, you know, okay, is it state-of-the-art? It's not state-of-the-art. But I'll tell you what, the day we moved into the renovated Williston Center, it was not state-of-the-art. It's never been. I mean, I feel like Williston is kind of my common man approach, you know, we do things, you know, that appeal to the common man in Minnetoka, we don't have to have the newest, brightest, and shiniest. And so, that's, that's one part of me, and, but then, the other part of it is that question of who do we want to really attract? I mean, we've got plenty of old people, I'm one of them, we don't need more old people, but we're gonna get them. But we do need more young people. And so, and so, when I look at strategically, you know, where are we better investing our money, we're probably better off investing our money in our young population to be attractive than we are to investing into getting more people that look like me. But, so, you know, after, having said that, I am not compelled right now to spend a lot of money on Williston, I'm just not. But to look at this pragmatically, I think that, I mean, if we were going to build a new facility from scratch, would we build it there? The answer is no. The site's too small, it's got too many problems. So, why would we expand the footprint there? I mean, pickleball's nice, we like it, it does not belong. Number nine, get rid of it. I mean, if we take number nine off, a 20 million dollar project becomes a 10 million dollar project. Now, I'm not saying we should spend 10 million dollars on it, but, you know, let's make sure what we do passes the smell test. Spending 20 million dollars on this location is a mistake, and I wouldn't do it. Adding, cutting that hill down to add parking, shame on us. I mean, we, you know, that is a bad idea. We need to be pragmatic, and we need to spend money like it's hard to get. And, and so, and, and so, I think, you know, I think we have to consider who our target audience is, but we have to make sure that the improvements we make are not being made for the sake of improvement. You know, air conditioning that barn, that's a dumb idea. That's a million bucks, why would we do that? If people want, you know, people play tennis outside when it's 90 degrees all the time. If they, you know, you know, maybe we don't rent all of our courts every day of the year. I think that's smarter than spending a million bucks to air condition a barn that's gonna leak like a sieve. So, you know, I just think we have to be very practical as we look at this, and I think, you know, I think Williston's, I mean, Williston's popular. If it sucked, it wouldn't be popular. Can we, I think we can be smart, I think there are some improvements that we can make, but, you know, the fact that you can't watch tennis very conveniently, big deal. I mean, you know, we could put closed circuit TV in and have people watch it elsewhere. I mean, we just, some of these things are nice to have, but are just not essential. And I don't think Williston needs a lot of improvement, I think it could use some refreshing, but, you know, I remember what the locker rooms used to look like. And so, so, I mean, and they were kind of scary. I think, I think, are they great now? No, and they're a little cozy at times, but you know what, I don't think Williston is on life support. I think Williston's in good space. I think we, I think, I would drop Williston down, but recognize that when we're gonna do something there, let's look, let's look at that target audience that we want to attract and do it in a way that's gonna be attractive to that younger demographic. So, not to beat up anybody, but I just think, you know, I just think that this one doesn't pass the smell test in terms of the, the order of magnitude of the expenditures for what we would really get, and I just don't think the location is good enough to expand it. I think we can, we can improve it, but I would not expand that footprint one square foot, personal opinion. Mike?
Oh, I think Kimberly has that.
Oh, go ahead, Kimberly.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I was, I was on, I was, I was going there for a while, excuse me.
Yeah, that's fine. So, I had kind of joked with Kelly, like, if it was up to me, I'd build a Skyway from Williston to, to the community center, to the Marsh, and just blow up the budget completely, but.
So, you did win that. We were wondering who won that lottery ticket.
Right. But, I mean, I don't have much to ask, to add, I would also put Williston down on the list of priorities, but if Mr. Nelson comes back to us and says, you know, I, I, I'm a genius.
I did it out.
I found 20 million dollars.
Got it at 1%.
Well, I found 80 million, we can do everything, you know, I wouldn't say no, so, but yeah.
I had a hundred grand over here, but it's gone.
Oh, someone, I think I ate it. So, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not gonna, if, you know, when, when you come back with the budgetary things, if there are maybe some things we can do at Williston and not others, you know, we can consider that, but yes.
I'm gonna have to say, I think this is good feedback on Williston.
I hope it's helpful.
I think, I think we've got some good sense of where council's at on it. Again, we'll, we'll bring back some options for you to think about in terms of Williston, but I do hear it's a lower priority, but if there's an app, I think there, I hear there's an appetite to maybe look at doing some things, which is important.
Yeah.
I mean, Williston's been very successful. We do have 10,000 members, and we want to make smart investments, so we keep 10,000 members.
Right.
We don't want to start sliding members, because we're not keeping up with some, some important essentials. So, I think we have that in, we have your comments, and I think we're pretty good unless there's others on this.
Williston is uniquely Minnetoka, and not in a bad way.
And I hope that, I hope the impression is not that we don't want to keep, I mean, we want to keep spending money. Williston is self-sufficient for the most part, and we need to take that into account as a council when we're talking about, of course, it needs what it needs, but an infusion of capital is hard to stomach right now.
Yeah. And so, we got 15 or so minutes to hear about the Marsh, so let's rock and roll.
Great segue. Okay, so the Marsh, as you all know, is a super unique facility, really can, because of its well, health and wellness focus, it really sets it apart from other, other facilities, certainly in any other municipality. But as you'll see, there are some options that we've developed that you've seen in the report to try to maximize its use. What's working well currently, the programming is in high demand, it's got the seniors and adult programming, the informal social space in the building, you know, regardless of whether you may think it's dated, which I would agree with that, it works really well. It works well for its function, it's got great connection to the outdoors, the adjacent landscape and the trails. I'm kind of going back to some of the overarching vision. What's not working well is really, it's sort of showing its age. You know, some of the spaces are underutilized, could use code, code upgrades, like restroom spaces, that sort of thing. The, the ability to do swim lessons is somewhat limited here, which may or may not matter from a programming standpoint. There are some weird things like the guest rooms in the kind of retreat center that, you know, leave us scratching our heads a little bit for a public facility, but I think we've got some, some options to share with you that make some sense out of that. The takeaway is, a lot of the survey respondents were members there, and very, as you may know, love the, love the Marsh, are really motivated to keep the, the unique programming there intact, the spa services, improvements to the walking track were something that were mentioned as, as something that they'd be in favor of. Connecting to the trails, again, that outdoor connection to that landscape was really important. And then, the types of programming, events, and services that folks would like to see more of at the Marsh, or continue to see, yoga and meditation, functional fitness classes for seniors, more spa offerings, health-related educational seminars and events, those are all things that are really unique to the Marsh that are important to the survey respondents. The restaurant, and having a food service option there was mentioned as, as important. Expanding programming there was desired as well, and again, sort of a refresh. So, we took all of that feedback and came up with a few options that I'll, I'll go through in a little bit more detail, but high level, option one is to just refresh what's there, new finishes, keep it as-is, just upgrade the finishes to refresh it. Option two is to do that refresh, but then also look at the kinds of renovations that are a little bit more heavy, that would allow for expanded programming, to really amp up the unique offerings there. And then the third is to add to the building, add an event pavilion to help expand programming, especially the social gathering and events aspect of them, and providing that infrastructure to the west of the building. And then, of course, the other option would be to sell the property. Option one, I mentioned, the interior refresh, we'll call it, that includes deferred maintenance items that are already sort of in the CIP, things like HVAC systems, the exterior of the building, roofing, the siding, this is, you know, repainting things, having new ceilings, lighting, millwork cabinets, furniture, AV technology, maintaining the pools. It's really just taking what's there and giving it a refresh. Option two includes that, builds on that option, but then starts to make a few more, larger renovation moves. One is to expand the conference center on the upper level above the spa functionality. The second is to upgrade the spa spaces and expand them to the exterior, to further connect the interior programming to the exterior. Relocating the offices to make room for an expanded restaurant, especially a dining room, to create more of a destination, restaurant in that location. And then renovations to upgrade, with heavier renovation will require code compliance, so things like an elevator that goes up to the upper-level walking track, those sort of things would be included in option two. So, on the plan, this is the, the lower level, so if you're familiar with the Marsh, you come in at the main level, and then there's a lower level, and there's also an upper level. On the lower level, that's where the fitness areas, the pools, the locker rooms that we're proposing as part of option two, we would reconfigure them to meet code, to sort of upgrade them generally, to add more inclusive locker room spaces, as well as family locker room, to the, to the locker room area. And then, where the current physical therapy suite is, upgrading that lease space, and also connecting that to the exterior towards the north, we're proposing adding a deck that would include a couple of hot tubs, saunas that could be rented, similar to what you're doing now at, I forget the name of the beach.
Shady Oak Beach.
The Shady Oak Beach, as well as some plunge pools to go along with those saunas to expand on that spa experience. On the main level of the building, on the east end in the, in the pink, upgrading all of those spa spaces, just, you know, perhaps reorganizing them, adding some more specialty services, but just upgrades generally. Relocating the offices, as I mentioned, from where they're currently at, if you're familiar, is kind of behind the restaurant, moving those more front and center to where the current child watch areas or kids' classroom. So, the offices would, would be there, and then that would also serve as a storefront for rentals, bikes, snowshoes perhaps in the winter, really to try to tie the, the building to the trail. And then, of course, increasing the, the restaurant space on this level. And then on the upper level, I mentioned expanding the elevator to serve this walking track level. So, of course, I should repeat that all of the finishes throughout the building, in addition to the things that I'm pointing out, would be. addition to the things that I'm pointing out, would be upgraded as part of this. But the main thing on the upper level is the event space. So, if you're familiar with the dragon room, really reorganizing that whole level, keeping the dragon room intact, but creating a large event lobby to the north that opens towards the marshy landscape that could also serve for larger events, even in concert, if you could open up the whole dragon room and have, you know, a large wedding or some sort of an event there. And also providing some infrastructure, like some smaller meeting rooms, a green room, restrooms, to serve that event space. So, really, a completely new conference center, retreat center, with a connection, a stair, you may have noticed, there's a, kind of in light gray, a stair in the upper corner of the building. We're proposing connecting all of those levels so that a spa could be connected to an event. Imagine, like, you have a wedding that has, you know, access to the spa, that sort of thing, to try to start to knit those program potentials together. So, that's option two. Option three, as I mentioned, is adding on to the building. To the west, there's a little bit of property, as you'll see momentarily, there are some real constraints at the Marsh in terms of setbacks from the wetlands, the floodplain, as well as parking on that site. And we actually studied early on, like, could we put a pickleball gym there? Could we do an indoor play area there? We didn't want to necessarily compete with Williston, but we wanted to kind of test the site, and really, none of those things fit on this site based on the constraints. But where we did land was an event pavilion, something that could really marry well with the kinds of programming that exists there now in terms of events and other types of programming, as well as the restaurant, to just expand what's, what you're able to do there. I know this is kind of a complicated site plan, but you can start to see, the Marsh is, I don't know if I can point with this thing, no. The Marsh is along the bottom of the, you know, the building is here. Oh, yeah, there we go. The parking lot kind of stretches out along Minnetonka Boulevard. We're proposing with a new addition, we would need some new parking, so there's a potential for parking kind of at either end. So, we're using this parcel to the west of the existing, the city-owned parcel, as part of that potential expansion that we would need parking for. This is a blow-up plan of the pavilion. Most of it is open air, sheltered seating and event space, that's in the kind of light yellow colored, color there. We can seat, you know, I don't know, roughly 120 seats there at tables. Concessions and restroom and storage, or rental storage area, that would be enclosed spaces that also would have a connection to the restaurant. So, perhaps the restaurant could run that concessions and, you know, have service outdoors, or that could be a separate rental, you know, kind of to be determined, but that connection would make both of those things possible, and that flexibility possible. Here, you can really see the floodplain lines, the 100-year and 500-year floodplain, and the line of the wetlands. Those are a real constraint on what can actually be built on the site. So, that's a little bit about that pavilion, and this is a rendering of what that could look like. So, the pavilion is here on the right. It's sort of an open structure. You can see some seating and a connection to the, I always forget what it's called, the moon.
Moon terrace.
Moon terrace. That's part of the restaurant seating now, so all of that could be interconnected. And we're showing a gable roof that would just sort of riff off of the existing building and fit in nicely there. But all of this would sort of look out towards that landscape to the north. So, from a cost standpoint, the refresh, option one, and that is $6.9 million of new work, as well as the deferred maintenance that's already planned for over the next 10 years. Option two would include the cost of option one, as well as add some cost for the more heavy renovation. So, the range there is about $13.4 million to $17.9 million for option two. Remember that it does include option one. And then, option three, the addition, would be another either $4.9 to $5.9 million for that structure. And then, of course, the option four would be to sell the property.
Very good. So, council, options one through four, what are your thoughts? Or one through three, I think is really what we're looking for. Comments? Rebecca?
I mean, I think the Marsh is a tremendous asset. I, you know, I have really, I think it's important to make it clear that I've kept my mind open on this property since October of 2022, because I just didn't know, you know, and I've been watching the numbers grow, I've been watching the community response. Space for employees, it has alleviated some pressure on there. I'm really impressed with the growth, considering the condition of the space, and kind of the partially open feel that certain aspects have. So, I, you know, I'm prepared, in my opinion, to remove, sell the property as an option. That's not, and from my perspective, an option. I love the pavilion option. It reminds me of, there's a really cool pavilion at Madden's that they, is like, almost year round, and they've heat, they've got heaters, very cool. I just don't think, I think we've got some similar space that we've developed with Ridge Shell Commons, and, you know, I, again, if we had a blank check, I love it, but I think we have to show some restraint here. However, I think option two would have a payback. I think we're closer to cash flowing the property, especially if we take into account, from an accounting perspective, the business use of the city's use of that space, the park, the recreation department's officeing there. So, I think with just amplifying it, getting some more revenue streams in there with the spa, maybe the basement spa scenario, which allows us to get maybe a higher level of membership, people paying, and we can maybe get some of these seniors to open their wallets for when they go there, rather than the silver sneakers. So, I'm very much in favor of option two. I think it's a good use of resources and probably a payback.
Yeah, I would say I agree with everything that Rebecca said, and I also think about, you know, we were underpooled, maybe, we probably still are underpooled, but we got two pools. One pool would have cost $25 million at the very least, and we got the whole kit and caboodle for under $5 million, you know, with everything in it and all of the other things. So, in terms of, you know, cash flow, payback, like, was the investment worth it? I mean, to me, that's a no-brainer. I, at this point, I was off the table for me, that I agree that the public feedback's extraordinarily positive. People write to me, you know, when they see me at the store or whatever, they literally go out of their way to thank me about the Marsh. And so, I just think it's a wonderful community asset. My feeling about the pavilion is, my understanding in our meeting the other day about it was, that is something that we can revisit later. Out of all of the things that we've been considering, this is not, this is less of an all or nothing, the way it sort of was with, you know, some of the things at Williston. And it is super cool. It's just when I think about, again, the other capital expenditures that we are looking at for the city, and I think public safety is, you know, literally job number one, we do have to show some restraint. So, I'm very in favor of option number two, keeping the option of option number three open in the future, because I think that the whole idea is to sort of maximize use and also get some cash flow, and if we build up membership, build up visitors, we might be, you know, make a case for option number three, and it might not be that hard to do. But one of the reasons I bring up, you know, why it was so worth it is, I mean, just the pools alone. So, heck of a deal. I mean, because 18 million, I mean, frankly, 24 million is still less than it would have been to build a brand new pool.
Yeah, you're right. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add? Kizzy and Kimberly.
I was going to say, I agree with everything that was said. However, I do like option number three, but I know, again, you know, we were talking about dollars, we gotta be mindful of that, so I think, like Deb said, just keeping it on the table for the future. But also, as we talk about doing renovation, and I continue to think about the inclusiveness in this building, I still, when I go visit it, or the few times I have, I just don't feel the inclusiveness in this building, the space. And so, as we continue to expand, I'm constantly thinking about that, that's always going to be a priority of mine's, and I just don't see it. And I'm really concerned about the investment that we're doing in our buildings all across Minnetonka, but I'm still really concerned about the inclusiveness for everyone, because I'm not seeing it.
Kimberly?
Yeah, so, my thought and like the discussion I had with Mike today is, I am in favor of keeping the Marsh if we can get to a point where we're breaking even, or making money. So, for me, option four is not on the table now, but like, you know, if we get four or five years down the road and I'm still here, and it's still losing money, then I think, you know, we might have to revisit, is it a facility we want to keep? And is the thought on the pavilion that that would also be a space that could be a rental revenue generator? So, I guess I would like to hear, I know Mike was saying that you think that if we do option two, that we would be able to increase revenues and get to a point where, again, where we're breaking even. I would like to see what the analysis is with adding the pavilion into that, if, so, I would just like to see those numbers and what you think would, how that would work out as far as breaking even and timeline.
Comment, any other comments? Go ahead, Paula.
Just real quick, yeah, thank you for this, and I agree, I think we need to keep the Marsh, it's such a unique amenity that sets us apart from all the other communities in the region or in our locality. So, I think that's, you know, a no-brainer for all the reasons that have already been set up, as well as that, I was a little confused by the pro forma, so I also agree that it would be nice to have, you know, this is basically doing the option three with the pavilion would be an additional 20% to 25% cost. What is that going to mean in terms of, do we go from, my understanding was a little different, I thought that we would be, at best, break even with just the renovation, but that a pavilion, which would be an additional rental event space, which again, would be pretty unique, especially as we see the amount of church weddings going down, the amount of events and or weddings like this going way up, you know, what that would mean in terms of the cash flow difference. So, just amplifying that, I would also like to see that, because I think if we invest a little bit of money now, because construction costs will probably only go up in the next three to four years, are we better off by taking, biting the whole apple now and getting that, and getting that revenue stream sooner rather than waiting?
Patsy?
Yeah, I agree that, my first thought was, like, when we talk about option four, selling the property, and like, to be clear with the staff or something, like, let's keep, let's, is, let's take it off of the options or not? You know what I mean? Like, it does feel like that's kind of something that even, like, maybe we were talking about the staff, like, don't know if they have a job or not, and so, like, it sounds like it's off the table at least for five years, and if we could just be clear about that, I think that would, it would ease, I mean, it would just be clearer, and I vote for that, but also what Paula and Kimberly were saying.
All right, anyone else? Got a couple of comments. You know, I would take the sell the property off the table. I don't think it's, I don't think it's seriously under consideration now, and given the public support that we've had, I don't think we need to leave it there. You know, I think, I think that when a city owns buildings and property, the decision can be made to sell something at any time. But based on my time around, cities don't sell things, they buy things. And, you know, so, I think we should just take it off and dispense with this idea that we're going to sell it, we're not going to sell it. The, as I told in my conversations earlier with the staff, you know, I think option two is what makes the most sense, but I do like option three, but I would also really be interested in corporate support, you know, private, private sector, find a way to get it paid for, naming rights, I mean, who knows? I think, I think if we got creative and innovative, we could find another way to get that built and paid for without having to ask the taxpayer for taxpayer dollars on that. So, you know, that's how, I would, I would say option two is what needs to be done. Option three is something, you know, and it was, and the way it was constructed, it was not like, oh, well, you know, it's all or nothing, you know, but keep that in the back of our mind. I think expanding to the west like that, but let's look, let's find a creative way to pay for it and not expect the taxpayer to pay for it. I think that is attractive to me. And then, the other, the only closing comment I want to make is that Willis, I mean, the Williston Center is really unique in that it cash flows. Most facilities like that in most cities, I mean, if we did a survey, I'll bet 90% of them around the country do not cash flow. Williston is very unique, okay? So, as we look at the Marsh, I want to make it cash flow too, but I don't want to put such a big hurdle on the Marsh that we have an unrealistic expectation, because if the Marsh is like 90% of the facilities in the country, it may not cash flow, but it still may be in the public, it still likely will be in the public interest because of the amenity it represents. At the same time, I really respect, I think diversifying the utilization of the Marsh is really, needs to be a goal that we have, because, you know, I don't, you know, I don't want it to, I don't want, I don't, Williston and the Marsh to be kind of two separate worlds. I want it to be that, you know, we have, we have things that meet different needs, and people can use them both, and, or one, or both, or whatever, and, you know, and I think we really want to have a diverse population of people using our facilities. I think that's important, and that's not just those two facilities, that's, that's all of our facilities. I mean, we want to be a welcoming and open place, and we want our facilities to be used by both our residents, but also people from the region, and we want everyone to feel welcome here, so. Mike, do you have any, anything else from us? Is that helpful?
I'm good for the direction, I appreciate that. Mike, if you have closing comments?
No, I think this is extremely helpful. Mayor and council, appreciate your time tonight on this. I think, I think Kelly said it well, I think we've got good, good feedback from you. Our next step is to bring this conversation back, because again, this is, tonight was just the first night of it, and so, we'll have more conversation, be working with our staff, both Kelly and Darren. Certainly, the financing piece is very important. So, what we'll plan to bring back to you, I think loosely, we're saying next study session, so May, we do have some time built into our May study session, we'll bring more information back to you, more consideration, and then we'll go from there. But I think we have what we're looking for, so thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. And then, I think the next thing up is our, look, well, you covered next meeting, but...
Yeah, next meeting?
We'll go to the next agenda item and be done. May study session, topics and time. Yeah, thank you, well done. It's a good report.
Nice process.
Yeah.
All right, so as I just mentioned, May study session, I have to look at the other agenda items quickly. All right, so as I just mentioned, May study session, I have to look at the other agenda items quickly. Oh, yeah, so May, yeah, so we will be back with the budget kickoff, so 2025 budget kickoff. So we'll do some preliminary discussions and look for your feedback for 2025. We anticipate having the community survey results as well, so Peter Leatherman should be here. That survey is in, in its, I think, final stages. And I think they're in their final stages of collecting the data and that presentation will come forward. That all wraps in nicely then as we bring back facilities that fits into budget and survey and we'll start mapping all of this out next month.
All right.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any last comments, anyone? Thank you all. Have a good night. Thank you.